I'd like to call the board to raise their hand up. Would you please, please?
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a roll call?
This is Elder, President. This is Kozar. Here. Dr. Lachlan. Mrs. Mays, here. Mr. Mohler.
Here.
Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. George.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
I'd like to inform everyone that we had a, prior to the meeting, we had an executive session to discuss personnel issues. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to anyone for hearing of visitors, part one. If you wish to stand up and speak of anything on the agenda tonight, feel free and keep your brief. Five minutes, please.
Good evening. Diane Penzera, 112 Allen B. I'm here as a parent, a teacher, press question of GLEA, and representative tonight for Dan Crack, who is the current president of GLEA but couldn't be here. I want to speak briefly to Resolution 172. The teachers in GLEA request, respectfully request, that the Board does not vote in favor of Resolution 172. We feel that while we have no issue with attending any kind of Act 80 Day, it's a day taken away from instructional time that is very, very much needed, particularly since we have high-stakes testing in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So move for Resolution 251-171. Approval demand?
So move.
Second. Over to motion, uh, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Solicitors report?
No report, Mr. President.
Legislative report, Dr. Lachlan is not here tonight. Education planning, Mrs. Mays.
Thank you. I would like to bundle Resolution 172 and 173. 172 being to approve the changes to the 2014-2015 calendar, extending the school year by two days to make up for snow days in the calendar. And 173 was permission to apply for the Act 80 Day on Thursday, April 2nd, 2015. So move.
Move a motion on the floor, wait a second.
Second.
Move a motion and second. All in favor?
Very much.
Aye. I have a question.
Question? Sir?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I think I can address to some degree. What Mrs., that's okay. What Mrs. Penzera was talking about is the Act 80 Day on Thursday. Last week, we had also had a half-day early dismissal on Wednesday. So April 1st was a half-day dismissal and Thursday was the Act 80 Day, which counts as one snow makeup day. The district had three snow days this winter. One would be made up of that day for Act 80. The other two were added at the end of the year. In light of what Mrs. Penzera and some teachers concerned, we have removed the half-day on April 1st. So it's a full day of instruction on Wednesday. Act 80 that day on Thursday will remain in Act 80, at least it's my recommendation. We do have a speaker coming in that we have been working with for an extended period of time on a day that we thought that might become a snow day, given that we generally have some days during the winter that we will be working with our junior and senior high school staff. So I certainly understand what Mrs. Penzera is referencing. The half-day, I think, at least gives a full day of instruction there for our students for that day prior to the spring holiday, which then would be for the students, Thursday, Friday, Monday, and for the teachers, and Friday and Monday.
But they're asking for another full day of instruction.
They're asking that Thursday not be an Act 80 Day. And I'm referencing that.
Because they don't think they want to teach that day.
I understand that.
That's why I want to get clear.
Mrs. Penzera didn't address the half-day on Wednesday, which has been taken off the calendar. I understand where she's coming from, too. With key student exams looming in May, adding days at the end of the school year doesn't help the day's instruction to get ready for the key student exam. But really, I don't know where else you put those other two days. Saturday, you can have five days of instruction in a week. Monday, Memorial Day, you could actually do a Saturday that week, but that's after the key stuns as well, so that doesn't help that issue. What happened for us is, in January and February, when we had snow makeup days, we hadn't had a snow day. Our snow days were later in the calendar. I think Ligonier had 10 snow days, 10 school cancellations. So the fact that we only had three, I think that we're very, very lucky, and I commend Mr. Mears over there as far as making sure that we were able to get in. We did have 10 snow school delays, two of which the teachers were in session the full day, but the students weren't, and eight where the students actually and staff came to our place because of sad roads. So those are obviously also a concern, which I know teachers are concerned about as well.
Can I ask another question? How many Act 80 Days do you need?
Well, actually.
Do you require for that certain number?
Yeah, actually, no, you can have as many as you want. You have to meet the number of hours, however. The state of Pennsylvania dictates 180 days of instruction, which we actually have a calendar of 181 days of instruction and six professional involvement days or in-service days. The state deems that it can be either days or hours. The 990 hours of instruction, we very, very clearly meet. We, I think we have maybe three or two Act 80 Days in calendar. I don't really have to go back and check, but we are clearly within the guidelines.
How important is that Act 80 Day so that we have full day of instruction?
We have a speaker lined up to come in, she's coming in from Pittsburgh. I guess one of the other questions is, and clearly it's a nice day to have for students, we have, I think, six teachers who have requested personal days already because they already have plans for trips. We also generally have an increase in student absences those days because students often travel, parents travel on that long weekend, which actually is why we had not made Monday a snow makeup day. If you remember the discussion last year about the calendar, in checking with Ligonier and Derry this morning, Derry and Ligonier have school on Monday, but they don't. Ligonier has an early dismissal on Thursday, and Derry has off on Thursday. So it's really a mix across the board as far as how some of these days are made up. So we have two Act 80 Days. Dr. Tepper just checked.
Any other questions, any motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Yes.
Yes.
Division, please.
Division, please.
Yes.
Roll call.
Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozar?
No.
Mr. Mohler?
opposed.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Mays?
Yes.
That motion passes.
I will move for adoption, Resolution Number 174 to approve the 2015-2016 school calendar. Second.
Motion and second. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
I will move for adoption, Resolution Number 175 to approve the textbooks listed on your agenda.
Motion and second. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
I would like to bundle Resolutions Number 176 and 177. 176 being to approve the Westmoreland County Student Assistant Program Agreement for 2015-2016. And Resolution Number 177, approval for purchase and service agreement between GLSD and the Delphi Village Incorporated. So move. Seven.
Motion and second. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
I move for adoption, Resolution Number 178 to approve the tuition student for Derry out of agricultural program for the remainder of the 2014-2015 school year. So move. Seven.
Motion second. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
And I move for adoption, Resolution Number 179, permission to host a WCMEA Junior High Chorus Festival on March 11th, 2016. Seven.
Motion second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
And the next curriculum committee meeting date is Tuesday, April 21st, 2015, at 5:30 here in the C S.
Thank you, Ms. President. Finance, Mrs. Elder.
Thank you. I'm going to bundle Resolution Number 180 to approve the treasurer's report, 181 to approve the payment of bills, and 182 to approve the, that wasn't even mentioned. The budgetary transfers. And I move for adoption of those three. Start.
Motion and second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you. And I'll move separately to approve Resolution Number 183, to approve the gifts, grants, and donations. Start.
Motion and second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close.
And I'm assuming that I properly thank you properly for the, that you're helping to be donor. And I'd like to have Mr. Watson make some introductions and pass a discussion before moving for adoption of the next resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Well, I think we have some good news from the board tonight. As you know, we're looking to refinance our 2005 bond issuance. We have with us tonight the team that worked on that. I'm going to like to introduce Chris Bamber from PFM as our financial advisor. But I'd also like to recognize Tom Lynch, Bond Counsel from Lynch &amp; Lynch, Bob Almer from J. Montgomery &amp; Scott. And I just threw a blank in my ball.
I'm sure he's nice to see all of you.
But in addition to that, too, I'd also like to acknowledge, we have four of our members from our school board in the audience. Mr. Fisher, Mr. Ballmeister, Mr. Visconti, and Dr. Leonard. I'd like to thank you guys for coming tonight. I know. That's Ned, that's not me.
Stand up, Ned. Come on.
The handsome guy's in the second row. But just so the board is aware, what we'll do tonight is hopefully we'll get the board's blessing to make recommendations to the authority members. And then if I'm not mistaken, we'll separate out, and the authority then will review and act, and that'll lead the process. So I'm turning it over to Chris.
Great. Well, thank you very much once again. My name is Chris Bamber. I'm here from Public Financial Management. I'm the district under the authorities and independent financial advisor. You're probably used to seeing Scott Shearer, who was here last time. Unfortunately, he was in a pretty bad skiing accident last Friday. Broke his leg and tore ACL, so you wouldn't be much good standing up here. So I'm here on his behalf. Everyone should have a handout from that kind of looks like this. It's called Bond Sale Document. It contains all of the relevant details of the refinancing which happened today. Basically, I'll go over it in fairly good detail. And if you ever have any questions, just feel free to interrupt. I'll do my best to answer them. And also, so we can circle back to the end of the questions. The first few pages is the Moody's Rating Report. As with any bond issue that the school district or any local government does, a credit rating is needed. The bonds did receive an A1 underlying rating, which is a very strong rating. I encourage you to read that report. It's very detailed, has a lot of good information on the school district, highlights a lot of the key strengths of the school district, including a stable and growing tax base, a rapid amortization of existing debt, and also sound financial management. So that's something you guys should be very proud of. Once again, I won't go over that in too much detail, but I encourage you to read it. There's a lot of good things in there about the school district. I'll skip ahead to, what is it, page six. Page six is an interest rate chart. I'll put your attention down towards the bottom, which is a two-year maturity chart. Basically, interest rates have been fairly volatile over the past few months, just given all the different economic news that's coming out. But as you can see there, as we look in the grand scheme of things, looking back 10 years, we're definitely in the lower end of interest rates. So it's definitely a good time to be considering any sort of refinancing, just given where absolute interest rates are. I'll move now on to the details that go into what was the calculation of the actual savings number. Page seven is the amortization schedule of the series of 2005 bonds as it stands right now. If you were to do nothing, this is what you would pay. You can see right there, $10.1 million of principal outstanding in column two, an average rate of just under 4% there, or 5% there in column three. And then as we move from left to right, it's basically the calculation of interest, debt service, and then what they call state aid, which is reimbursement through a plan com program, is shown there in column seven. Page eight is just simply a calculation of the amount of paid bonds. The most important page is page nine. Page nine is what are the new coupons and yields and amortization schedule of the 2015 bonds which were priced this morning with J. Montgomery &amp; Scott. Basically, both PFM as the district's independent financial advisor, consulting with J. Montgomery &amp; Scott as the district's underwriter, went out this morning to investors. And the interest rates that you see there in column four were the new yields that were offered to investors. You can see the new principal amount's just a hair under $10.1 million. The average rate on the, on column four is about 0.56%. So when you're looking at the existing rate, which was just under 5, you've now gone from just under 5 to just over 0.5. So it's a pretty large drop there in interest, which is what's generating all these savings here as we move from left to right. I'll point your attention all the way to the right, which is column 11, which is the net savings number. This number is net, net, net. When I say net, 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 I mean it's net of all costs of issuance, as well as it's net of all state reimbursement. Meaning that right now, as I mentioned before, the school district's existing bond issue receives plan com reimbursement of about 11%. For every dollar that the school district spends on these bonds, it receives about 11 cents in reimbursement. That reimbursement will be transferred through to these new bonds through a plan com K file, which we consist the school district with. That will get submitted to PD, and basically that reimbursement then transfers over to these new bonds. Now, just as the state shares in the payment of the debt service, it also shares in the savings of any debt service. So that's why that number, if we go to the little gray box on the bottom right-hand side, we always like to show things on what's a true net-net basis. I mean, these are true savings to the school district. So at the end of the day, when all the dust settles, after all the costs are paid, after all the plan com reimbursements taken into account, it's about $288,000. The little box there on the gray in the right-hand side attempts to show what is the gross savings, which is before the plan com reimbursement, and then the net savings, which is after the plan com reimbursement. I believe when Scott was here, I think in like mid-December, that gross savings number was, I think, literally within $400 or $500 of the number it actually came in on. So that's definitely a testament to, you know, how kind of well the market's been timed and how ultimately this financing turned out. The net savings are right about where we thought they were in December. So that's definitely a good thing. Moving on to page 10. Page 10 is a summary of the sources and uses. This includes all the costs and fees payable to all the professionals. And I can tell you that these, compared to the last bond issue, are significantly less. One of the important things, you see the third line down there, bond insurance. Bond insurance has historically been used by the school district that allows it to receive a higher credit rating. However, investors, and this was J. Montgomery &amp; Scott was able to trade, was able to price these bonds without the use of bond insurance. And so that eliminated a potential fee, which is in the range of about $36,000, just based on where it was in 2012. So once again, investors are comfortable enough with your credit strength that they don't need the additional security of bond insurance, which saves you the upfront premium of about $36,000. All the rest of the fees you see here are less than what they were in 2012. That was something we strived for. It was definitely a bit of a challenge. But if you look at things in total, the total fees here are less than what they were in 2012. The box there in the middle that says the yield of the issue, that's the average rate that I mentioned before. A lot of times people ask me, well, what rate do we borrow these bonds at? And the answer is you borrow them at basically three different rates, the yields that I showed on the previous page. But when you average those all together, it's about 0.56%. So that's when I, I mentioned that you go from just over 5 down to 0.56. That's the average yield of a new bond. So when someone asks you, what rate is your existing debt on your 2015 bonds? The answer is 0.56%. So that's obviously pretty good. The next few pages attempt to show what are our market comparisons as how these bonds price compared to other bonds that would have been in the market recently. Page 11 compares it to an upper Mayfield Township, which is a township in the eastern part of the state. It's highlighted there in yellow. They have a double A1 rating, which is actually three notches higher than the school district's rating of A1. It's one less than triple A, which is the highest you can get. So it's a very highly rated township. As you can see there, in column 10, the difference, a BPS or is a basis point, or 0.01%. In our industry, you're dealing with fractions of a percentage point, so we kind of magnify it just a little bit easier. Your first maturity, which is about 46% of your bond issue, or $4.6 million priced at a yield that was 0.2% better. So once again, when we looked at this as the independent financial advisor, we said, how does this pricing stack up against other types of financings in the market? Right there was the answer, that it was 0.2% better than a double A1 rated credit that priced, when was that last week? So once again, something that we're definitely very pleased with. We turn to page 12, which is another comparison, just to another large, large school district out here in the western parts, double A minus. And you can see, despite the fact they're a general obligation credit, which is basically the most secure credit, and we're a school lease revenue credit, which is still very secure, but just not as secure as a general obligation security. They have a double A minus rating. We still basically priced right on top of it for the first maturity, and a little bit better in the second maturity. And keep in mind, 96% of the bonds mature within the first two years. So that's really the focal point for us, to make sure that those two maturities are basically at or better than what the market is producing. So we're very pleased with these results. I think it's definitely a win for the school district. It's a good time to be entertaining a refinancing. At this point, I know I just said a lot, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or discussions that you may have.
Thank you, Tom.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the explanation. Before you sit down, I'd like to call the board's attention, as well as the public's attention, hopefully, to something that's on page two. Challenges to the bond rating.
Yes.
And listed are two challenges, and two only. Near-term financial challenges driven by increasing fixed costs, particularly pensions. And secondly, above manageable, above average Moody's adjusted net pension liability, which has to do with the way the school district manages that challenge, I think. But either one of those could be a real challenge if the state legislature doesn't do something. Thank you, Tom.
That was not directed. And it's a fair point. I mean, it's quite frankly outside of your control and it's frustrating. If that's what they're highlighting as a challenge, something that's outside of your control, really that's like a, you know, a good negative, if you will.
That's why I said two only.
Yes, yes. So I highly recommend you read this in pretty good detail, because I mean, Dan did a great job on the rating call. It's something that, you know, it's about 45 minutes to an hour, exhaustive questions into the deepest weeds you could ever think. And it all comes out with this little three-page paper. So I highly recommend reading it. It definitely paints a nice financial position of the school district. You should definitely compare it to them. All right, thank you. At which point, I don't know if Congress wants to introduce the resolution?
Sure.
Good evening. This is Tom Looks, the Bond Counsel. And summary of the debt resolution, which is the resolution the district must pass, has been handed out to the board of directors. And I'm just going to break down quickly what that does, and then read the summary into the record. And as you know, you use an authority, so what we have to do is have the district approve the supplemental lease agreement, have it approved through the Department of Community and Economic Development. You're going to acknowledge that the assignment of the lease rentals, which replicate the bond debt service, are paid to the authority's trustee. And just some sundry authorizations to do some filings with DCD. So in summary, I'll just read the resolution. It's a resolution of the district authorizing lease rental debt. The purposes of executing a 15th supplemental agreement of lease between the authority and the school district. The district as the less C consenting to the assignment, as I mentioned, the agreement of lease, authorizing execution and filing, a debt statement and related documents. You have that approved by DCD and authorizing performing all acts necessary under the Local Government Unit Debt Act, including doing any filings as required by the, by the Public School Code. So in summary, that is the debt resolution. And we would need a roll call of on that matter. So I'm, I'm finished with my presentation.
Thank you.
My question is, Mr. Solicitor, the resolution on our agenda meets the criteria that Mr. Lynch has set up.
Yes, the resolution specifically adopts the actual, summary of actual. Yeah, we attach it, we incorporate it by reference.
Thank you. May I move for adoption of the resolution? First, people, we have a roll call.
We have a second.
Okay.
Motion and second. A roll call of. Any questions?
I just, speaking as your solicitor, I wanted to tell you, I'm also the solicitor for the school authority. And I just want to thank Mr. Lynch, who does a wonderful job as your Bond Counsel. You know, I've done all the work that he's doing, but it's extraordinary, and the extraordinary attention to detail is unbelievable. As I read through the work he's doing, I'm always astounded by it. Likewise, we have Mr. Almer, who has represented us well for a number of years, for a number of different companies that he's worked for. And again, you have to be in a school district where something doesn't go smoothly to understand just how smoothly all of this works with these fellows. And I've been at a school district that I no longer do work for, where, you know, we had different people doing this, and it's a real rodeo. You're never sure it's going to happen. This, this happens like with such ease, and I think we all take it for granted. And that just means the people that you've been relying on really do good work. And with our new financial advisor, I think things went really well, of course, with Dan. Finally, although they would stand up and they don't want to get acknowledged, I really think that when we have our school authority here, they're my clients, too. And what the public may not know is that the school authority is really the final say-so in adopting this resolution tonight. They don't want to, you can recommend it to them, but they have to do it. And they are a group of gentlemen who often operate out of the center of attention, but they have periodic meetings when there's construction going on. They are receiving reports, they are touring facilities, and they are providing a second regulatory board, a second set of eyes to everything that this board sees. They are business leaders in the community, they serve, of course, a few, without any compensation. And quite frankly, their meetings are a lot of fun. Their meetings are public meetings, nobody comes to them. We love to have some. We love to have Sebby doing the audience. When my father was living, I think they would tell you they were a lot more fun. But it's just a wonderful group of individuals. We have all gentlemen now, but we've had women in the group too. And I would encourage public, if you ever have time, our meetings are advertised, and we'd certainly love to see some people there someday. But I want to just publicly acknowledge these gentlemen and thank them for the work they do for this board. We don't get to see them very often, and they're very unassuming gentlemen, every one of them. But they've served this district, well, many of them as employees and administrators, but others, like Mr. Fisher, our president, is just Mr. Vasconny, you know, local business leaders who really care. I just wanted to acknowledge it.
Any other comment or question? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozlar?
Yes.
Mr. Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Sword?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. Passon, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and I would like to echo the thanks and make that from all members of the finance committee as well. And the finance committee will be meeting on Wednesday, April 1st, which is of course April Fool's Day, and that is completely unintentional, at 10:00 AM of the administration. Thank you.
Can I ask all members of the school authority to move, we will now convene in a meeting to actually pass the debt resolution, which you recommended should be passed. So we want to reconvene to a separate meeting. Do you think?
Thank you. Thank you.
Very properties, clients.
Yes, I have no report other than our next property is scheduled to be set at 3:30 this afternoon.
Student activities is Dr. Lockman. So, Dylan, I will move for adoption of resolution number 185, Exella Health five-year athletic trainer contract. A motion and second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
That passes. So. I would also move for resolution, for the adoption of resolution number 186, approve of $15,000 grant for the St. Clair Park property.
Second.
Second. Just a motion and second. Any questions on the motion?
Yeah, who will we match, or what's the match? Is it money that the...
It's a DCNR grant that is being made.
Right, I got that. They're making that.
Right, and the grant is $8,000 with a $40,000 match.
Right.
The property is owned by the school district, and so the district would approach to provide some funding for the match. We discussed $15,000, that's a number on the table, and so an additional $25,000 would still need to be garnered in other areas to match. My understanding, no authority on DCNR grants, but there has to be a match. Not that they have to have the dollars in hand, but they have to have a letter of mail from various parties, so that when the grant is reviewed, they recognize that there's a match.
So the City of Little Troop has committed dollars to this, or...
I don't know about City of Little Troop, I'm talking about Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Right, right. They have not committed, I don't know if they've committed dollars, so I have no idea where the other 25...
Or is this services that blew up?
Not trying to match, no. This is property that's owned by the school district, St. Clair Park, at the top of St. Clair Street.
Any other questions?
Can we just give away the property?
$15,000.
I think.
For $15,000?
It's two and a half acres of ground. Because if you really use playground, it hasn't been updated. Many, many years.
So it'll really be always be a playground, right? Certainly.
Could be anything we own.
We're hoping. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I would also like to announce that winter sports recognition night is Wednesday, April 1st, 7:00 PM, at the senior high auditorium.
Mr. Hauser, if I could have a little bit? If you remember last week, I said I'd bring you the swimming update. This week, there's a swim event in the states, and the rest has just completed. Monica Swinski did medal twice. She was third in the 203, fifth in the 403. The reason I bring that up is not to be correct on that, but what she has done, in swimming, you can enter four events each year, WIU qualify for states. So as a freshman, Christina, you can enter 16 events. She wound up her career with 14 Wiu medal medals and 10 state medal, that was possible 16. It's ridiculous good. And she just got back this week, obviously, but I said I'd bring you the update. She's pretty good. So I wanted to make sure I brought that.
Great stuff. Okay, community relations, Dr. Sword.
I have a report. Just to recognize Exella Health here again tonight, all the folks representing the athletic training company. Dr. Agath Trainer, Dr. Carol Fox, thanks for covering. Happy that you're working with them in the next five years.
Wasn't willing to intervene in here, any thoughts?
Thank you. There are two summaries of minutes there. The summary of the regular WIU board meeting, which was, actually happened as a special meeting also, that's attached, and the summary of the WIU other special board meeting minutes held March the 13th, that's attached for your refusal. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 24th, at the WIU board. Thank you.
Thank you. BWC, TCC, as it goes on?
Yes, I have no report other than to say that our next JOC meeting will be March 25th, so yeah, with the BWC.
Board policy of the day is on, Mr. Stone.
Thank you. I move for adoption of resolution number 187, the notice to adopt board policies listed below. Second.
A motion and second. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Motion, Passy. I'll move for adoption of resolution number 188, the notice of intent to adopt the board policy, under its first reading of the policy listed below. Second.
A motion and second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'd like to report, and I'd like to extend my thanks to you, to your bus companies, and those most importantly are bus drivers and passengers, paying our students, it's all safe. Long-haul winter, and they did great job in transportation.
Thank you.
In the road cruise, can you detect it?
They did a great job.
You do a great job. You tell me I drive 982 and I beg to get off, I mean, you can't tell.
982 stinks.
It's awful. Not, I'm slamming the stick.
Technology, Mr. Paul.
Another report time, Mr. President. However, our next meeting is April 14th here, at 6:00 PM.
Superintendent's recommendations.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 189, which is the resignation of Luann Mills, the girls' basketball head coach. Second.
A motion and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 190, which is the support personnel appointment classified, the substitute personal care assistant of Patricia Campbell and two substitute assistants, Joseph Dunn and William Lohoff.
A motion and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 191, which is to approve the sabbatical leave for the 2015-16 school year for professional development, for Rebecca Snyder, who is a language arts teacher at the senior high school.
Second. Good stat.
We have a motion and second. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 192, which is to create a confidential secretarial position that, for its purpose, to support the process of implementation of centralized registration within the district. So moved. Second.
A motion and second. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 193, which is to approve the school resource officer, Robert Dare, as the GLSD school resource officer is noted.
So moved. Second.
A motion and second. Any questions?
Just a quick comment. Mike, thanks for plating through all that for us, and appreciate it, appreciate your quick work.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And under other, under other business, I'd like to recognize Mr. Dan Crapp and the students who participated and supported the musical last Friday and Saturday evening, Godspell. It was a wonderful, wonderful event, and I know many of you were there, but congratulations to Dan and to the students. In addition, some noted events coming up, our Christmas champions is this Thursday, March 19th. The Westmoreland County Sixth Grade Chorus Festival, which will be at the senior high school auditorium on Friday, March 20th, at 7:00 in the evening. The senior high school concert choir and chamber choir concert at Holy Family Church. This is an annual event. I know that it sometimes changes venues, but it's a wonderful event if you have some time. As well as the JOC, WCTC meeting, which will be next Wednesday at 7:00, and try to remember the statement of financial interest that are due May 1st to Mrs. All's house. Our board meeting dates are noted, Tuesday, April 14th and the 21st of April, as well as our spring board retreat on May 6th at 5:00 PM at LBS. Thank you.
We'll now open Florida hearing of visitors, part two. This is where you can come up, you're welcome to come up and introduce yourself, give your address, and speak of anything, doesn't necessarily have to go up as yet to...
I am not a speaker. So I'll make this brief. I'm talking to this, I'm supervisor of the Indian Township. Wanted to bring forth that I brought some programs to initiate our program. Why? There's a lot of good things in the program. There's activities, there's trips to the zoo, there's field trips, the pirate days, there's senior citizen activities, a lot of things. And every person that is in Greater Lakefront School District will be included in this program. So any kid in this program, in your community citizens, everyone that's involved with the, with Greater Lakefront School District. I just wanted to ask you for the use of fields, tennis courts, so that we can hit our foundation on this. We're not trying to compete with anyone. I want to make it known that my granddaughter participated in Lakefront Parson Rink, it's a very good program. They have good people. We're not competing against them. We want to start our own program. We want to include everyone that's in the school district, and I hope you look favorably on us. And as me as an individual, I think we have to keep to our part the kids' interest. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Yulish, can I ask your address, please?
Yes, 125 Briar Patch Lane. It's over by Montney Resto.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to take a quick minute to say thank you to all of you. This is really exciting to me. I'm one of the luckiest people, I think, because I get the chance to work with our kids every day, and doing what I do. I think anybody who's worried about our future has to come work for me for a day, because we see great kids all day long. So it really is a privilege. Little Troop has such a great reputation. We see a lot of Little Troop kids now. I've been so impressed with our hospital system over the past couple of years, with our administration, and anything we've gotten to them with, as far as what they can do to help people go hard, probably have gotten positive response to. So I'm excited about the people I work with, about the hospital system I work for, and everybody's a little bit frustrated, but I have the opportunity to work with them. So thank you all, and I hope you look like it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Same now, one. A motion and a term.
Second.
Second. A motion.